Okay, it's four o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the special meeting of the Otomo City Council to order. And if everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And Sheri will go ahead and take the role.
Um, Councilman Moreau?
Here.
Councilwoman Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
Here.
And Mayor?
Here. Uh, the next item on our agenda is to approve today's agenda, so is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
So, in a second.
Any further discussion? If not, uh, Sheri will take the role.
Uh, Councilman Moreau?
Yep.
Councilwoman Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
Yes.
Okay, and the main item on the table for discussion today is consideration and discussion of how to fill city council vacancy left by Sandra Pope, so I'm gonna turn it over to Phil Rath to see if he has any opening comments he'd like to make.
Uh, as just mentioned, uh, at the council meeting Tuesday night, uh, and that you're all copied on the memo as part of the packet that we received from, um, the attorney, uh, there's essentially two ways to do it, uh, one would be by appointment, uh, and the other would be by special election, uh, and so the city council, the first thing you're looking at is, is that. Uh, if you'd like to have a special election to fill the vacancy, um, the city would bore the co- bear the cost of that. Uh, uh, the alternative would be to determine, uh, go by appointment, uh, and then the method for how you want to, to do the appointment. Um, we've done it a couple of ways in the past, a couple of times ago, we, uh, went and took, um, applications or resumes uh, for people that were interested, and then the council interviewed and decided, uh, which, uh, the individuals, and that's how, uh, now Mayor Johnson got, uh, his start with the city council. Um, the last time, uh, with, uh, Councilman Hall, uh, it was done, uh, because of the recency of the prior election, uh, the city council determined that, uh, they would choose the next person in line on the ballot, uh, which in that case was, uh, was Hall, and, uh, he served, uh, for the remainder of that term. So those are a couple of options, uh, that would be before you, if there's another alternative, you could do that. Um, following this meeting, if, uh, if the decision is to go by appointment, we, the city will post a notice to alert the public of the intention, uh, and that would kickstart the fourteen day period, whereas the public could, uh, also determine that they would like to see a special election.
Couldn't we, um, uh, appoint prior to that fourteen days?
Uh, well, depending on, uh, what your process is, so you could take, uh, if you wanna do by applications, uh, what's a reasonable timeline, uh, to put that out there and accept those, uh, is that seven days, is it ten days, is it twenty days? Yeah, I mean, depending on the timeline for that. If you wanted to go and do it like we did last time, uh, and, um, say you're going to go off of the last election, um...
We could do that, let's say if that...
You could do that today, and it wouldn't take effect until after the fourteen day window expired, uh, for the public to, to file a petition if they would like.
Okay, thank you.
What's the cost of a special election, around about, like, you don't have a...
Seven to ten.
Was it eight, ten thousand, I think?
Yeah, I would like seven to ten.
Yeah, yeah.
So very costly.
I think those are the numbers we had last time.
Which has probably increased a little bit.
Would eight percent of the people vote?
Yeah, it's...
See, yeah, and, you know, I'll throw my two cents in here real quick, you know, looking at what the last election was, it was literally just two months ago, um, when we had the appointment of Russ Hall, it was very clear at that point, the voters said, um, "Go off of the election results." So I think really that this council, if, if she's still interested, if she is, um, willing to dedicate herself, um, to the position, basing off of what the sentiment was two years ago, it's probably best that the city council really just look at number three in the election, which was Cyan, because that was, that was the will of the people two months ago.
Well, and it was less than a hundred votes from, um, Keith and Cyan.
And, and the other big issue is, if we're gonna spend ten thousand dollars on what surely would be less than a thousand votes, I mean, that's gonna be arguably one of the most expensive elections per person that the city of Otomo has ever seen. So I, I think that that is something to really consider, um, because a- at some point, we really are wasting taxpayer dollars, and I think that this is one of those occasions where we have options, unless, of course, that the citizens will it, I think that we have other options to get qualified people to the table other than holding a s- a special election. Now, the other side of that, if, if, um, Cyan does not want to take that position, then I think we really should look at the position of an appointment, and, um, unfortunately for this council, you're very young, um, and I don't mean that in a negative way, just that you're very young. I think that you should be looking for somebody with experience, I, I don't necessarily agree at this point in time, we were in a different place when Mayor Rick, uh, got appointed to the city council where we had experienced council people. I think if we're going to do an appointment, we need to look at somebody who has experience as a city council member. We have former city council people, ask them if they'd be willing to do it. Um, but at this point, you know, having all, well, four or five people that are less than, right, as of today, less than two years, and then the fifth person's been out of the game for what, twelve years, fifteen years, something like that?
Hey, we are at two years, we got sworn in today, uh, two years ago.
Okay, so exactly, two years, so that would be my recommendation, if, if we're not going to go with who the, who the election said was number three, then we're doing an appointment.
And I know that you spoke with Cyan, but I do think that, um, and I'll, you can talk about kind of what she said, but I think we should have a phone call with her today, it's like, if that's the way we wanna go, I think it would be important to call her during this meeting too.
Well, just to clarify, if, if you're not doing a special election, then anything you do, whether you go off of the last election or any other process, it's still an appointment.
Yes.
Just for the point, clarification, yeah, you could, you'd be appointing Cyan if you go that way, or opening it up to, uh, and you could establish criteria. If you wanted to have, open up for applications, um, and with the criteria that, to their former, um, elected officials or whatever else, uh, that's up to the council on how you want to proceed on that.
The only, the only thing I guess I would throw out for the council to consider though is if you do decide to go down the road of going back and looking at the people that didn't win in last month's election, if you're going down that road to stay consistent, I would think people would really question if Cyan decides not to accept, if you didn't go ahead then and offer to the other candidate. I think if you're gonna go down that path, then you need to follow it clear on through, to be fair, to be fair and equitable. That's just a comment, I mean, that's just something to think about, I think, 'cause I think you could be criticized if you went down that road and then you didn't follow it completely through, if for chance she decided not to, and then Joe would say, "Yes, I'll be glad to do it." I think you just need to think about that, before you make up your mind what direction you wanna go.
What Bill says, well, and Council, Councilperson Moreau says makes sense is maybe some experience, and maybe looking at some... I mean, we could always, we have our options open to either do that or, I mean, 'cause you said it's by appointment anyway, um, so maybe entertaining some experience to see who would be interested.
I just think it's really important, you know, um, you've got a couple of very, very big issues coming up in the next three months. You've got four, four union contracts?
Mm-hmm.
Three, three, three union contracts, you've got a budget based on a really rocky financial situation coming up. Um, there's, there's just so much on the table, um, and having no depth of experience really on, on your council is gonna be a, it's gonna be a hard place to be in.
Well, with, with that said, we'd be in the same boat if Sandra didn't sit down. We still got fairly new people that's getting hit with three contracts, as far as that goes.
Well, that's true too, I guess, if you're all looking at it.
You know what I mean?
So, understood, but, but, but the fact of the matter is, is...
The situation's changed.
You do have the option now that you didn't have before.
But I, I think, my opinion is agreeable to you, but I, I agree with Mayor that if Cyan for some reason would say no, because I look at it this way, before we appoint somebody, they didn't run, these two people ran. So I tried to put myself in the third place person's place, I would be upset if the city council went out to grab someone that never ran, which means I wasn't interested, and these two are the only two left that did run. They, they should get first choice, so let's say for an example, if we go that route, Cyan says no, Joe says no, then if we appoint, there's less people saying politics, because we went back to where we probably should've went. And then that way, them two said no, we had no choice, but we had to go out to get somebody, that's just my take.
Playing the other side of the teeter totter here.
No way.
Um, I would just say, you know, one of our biggest criticisms, and, um, I'll, and I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I understand, and I agree with that too, but playing that other side too, um, we also have a public that's saying that we're very inexperienced, and so I think that goes back to Bill and, um, Mark's point too, so.
But we've been very experienced for two years.
I know, I'm just putting it back out there, where, yeah, we've been inexperienced for two years, we have an opportunity to not, to again, add another person, again, just throwing it out there, I mean, but I see what you're saying also, because, you know, we did have an election, so why would, you know, I...
And the election was only a month ago.
Yes, correct, or...
Not last month.
Oh my gosh, it's, yeah, it was November.
Yeah, yeah. So with everything, again, just...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, with everything being an appointment, we could look at interest, or we could look at experience, or we could...
I mean, we could call anyone, or we could, I mean, essentially, we could call Cyan right now and say, "Cyan, are you interested in this? Not only are you interested, are you able to fulfill the duties?" You know, I think that's a big point too, is that it's not only about is someone interested, or yeah, I would like to fill that, but are they gonna show up, are they gonna be prepared? Um, are they gonna go to their commission, 'cause we have commissions we're gonna have to appoint too?
Right.
You know, are they gonna be able to fully commit, and I know when we run, we say we're going to, but the reality is, are you going to be able to, and I think those are questions we need to ask too, so.
And my only response to that is both here and Keith, Keith Cavendish, did say at the League of Women Voters that they understood the importance of being at council meetings and being there to vote, and they both committed themselves in those public forums.
Yeah, I mean, that was then.
And when I talked to her on the phone, just to feel her out, if she was even interested, she told me she definitely would be, and she says, "And, and you won't have to worry about me not coming to meetings."
Yeah, I mean, I still think it's worth the conversation, you know, even today too.
Yeah, whoever you...
I would be comfortable if I heard it from her, yes, I will be there, I will commit myself to this.
I'll show up to my commission, yeah, so, to anyone, whether, if she says no, you know, let's say for some reason she were saying no, or someone else says no, whomever, I think whoever we're looking at appointing, that's the conversation we're having.
But should we have notified both of them before the meeting, 'cause that would be a cold call, where they don't have time to think.
Well, Cyan did get a call from...
I did call her yesterday just to see if that's the direct, and I made it very clear to her, I don't know what you guys were gonna decide, but if they decided to go back and look at the last election, she was the next top vote getter, and I just said, "Would you be interested in accepting that if the council chose to go in that direction?", and she said, "Definitely, I would be." I made it real clear to her that no decision's been made, and they might, they might not go that direction.
Do you tell her, she'll buy a friend, she never knew she had?
So...
I'm kidding.
But yeah, so I mean, I guess I...
That's all I can tell you, that's all she told me.
So could we call her?
I mean, yeah, and then it was, call her while she's available.
Here, I remember her here.
Is Bill or not?
Mark, I remember her.
Well, and just before you dial, I just said my two cents, and I kind of agree with...
But we don't have to call her now, I'm just...
Well, I agree with, with Councilperson McIntyre here, you, I mean, we're in a public meeting, I just found somebody on the spot, you know?
Hey, you know what, we're all put on the spot all the time. If she wants this office, then she can be put on the spot.
I mean, I, I...
I mean, I'm, I'm only half joking when I say that, well...
It makes sense, I mean, we all...
I mean, and also, we're in a public meeting, talking about a position that we're asking her to fill publicly, and if we call her and ask her, I mean, I think everyone deserves to, and we could...
Last night?
Yeah.
She knew there was a meeting at four?
Yeah.
Call her, if everyone agrees to let, what we think the direction we wanna go.
Do we think we wanna have a call with her?
I do, I do. What, what are we implying with a call?
I wanna make sure that she can attend meetings, and, um, she's committed to the process, and that this is truly something that her and her family are ready for.
So we're not committing, we're just, I just wanna hear her out, we're just getting it, we're getting details.
Because Councilwoman Galloway does make up a good point, it's not just going to city council meetings every month, but it's also going to the monthly Solid Waste Commission meeting, 'cause we have to have votes at that meeting too.
Well, and I think it transcends that, you know, and we're, we're all going to other meetings aside from, I mean, aren't you going to the cemetery board meetings, is that right? I go to, I've been going to planning and zoning meetings.
He's gonna take over some of my meetings.
Yeah, I, I mean, we have all have committed to meetings outside of those two.
I guess I was just, and, I was just referencing the ones that you have to make sure you're there, because votes take place.
Sure.
Well, yeah, and being prepared and that kind of stuff, like, it's not, it's not just showing up, it's...
Yeah, being engaged and taking the responsibility to do your homework and be ready to make informed decisions and vote, 'cause that's what happens at city council meetings, and that's what happens at Solid Waste Commission meetings. If people aren't willing to commit to that, then you probably don't want them on there.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to call on this, um, I was informed earlier today, I made a phone call, and it came up as spam, or potential spam, so...
Hey, you wanna text her and tell her what you know?
Yeah.
Call them, and it might say spam, but answer.
Yeah. Then it's gonna be the one time...
Or you have to throw spam.
Yeah. And I guess just who met her is talking, just to assure her that this is not a decision, it's a conversation.
And you might wanna let her know that she's talking during a public meeting.
Yes.
I dialed you.
You dialed me?
Yeah, 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 the other time I didn't...
He's right here, he's in the back of the meeting.
I know, I know, but I started dialing, I dialed six four one, I did dial the nine first.
Do you have the number here?
Oh, it's all right.
How many of those hats do you have?
Which one?
The one you're wearing. It's just so clean, and if you wear it every day, I just imagine you probably have ordered two.
Hi Cyan, this is, uh, Phil Rath, uh, from, uh, City Hall, and I've got, uh, actually, we're in a council meeting at the moment, uh, with city council. How are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good, so we're talking about, uh, how to potentially v- fill the vacancy left by Councilwoman Pope. Is it, did it catch you at an okay time?
Yeah, mhm.
Okay, um, I, some members of the city council are trying to make this decision on how to proceed, um, wanna just, uh, talk to you for a moment and, uh, maybe ask you a question or two?
Okay.
One of the options they have is to look back at the last election and see who was next in line, um, or they can look at other options for appointment, and so I think they just wanted to, uh, garner your interest and, um, anything else they might, might have to ask.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna turn it over to, to the mayor and council.
Go ahead, Mark, you.
So Cyan, this is Mark. Um, you know, some time has passed since the election, and I know, you know, during the election cycle, you had stated, you know, that you were, uh, you were fully committed to, um, not only being an active council person, but making sure that you were, uh, attending all required meetings, and then any, any, uh, extracurricular stuff that might be necessary to, uh, make sound decisions and become educated on, on the things that you would need to become a council member. Um, has, has that changed at any point since, uh, November, whatever date was?
Uh, no, it has not.
So, so if the council voted to appoint you, just to be clear, um, attendance would not be an issue?
Um, no, I do not foresee that as, as being an issue.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
I guess I just wanna, um, clarify too, so attendance not just with our reg-, this is Kara, by the way, um, I figure you probably know that. Um, anyways, just not, um, attendance through, uh, regular city council meetings, but if you were appointed to, um, boards or commissions, you would be willing and able to show up to those, and then also to solid waste, and then in general, just being prepared for all meetings, um, to be able to make sound, um, decisions and votes.
Uh, yes, yes, I, I think it's, uh, pretty clear that the position also comes with other responsibilities than every other Tuesday night, so, yes.
Other, just, other questions?
I don't have any, I don't have anything, Bill.
Yeah, I got, Cyan, this is Bill Junior.
Hi.
Um, and, you know, we, we talked before, of course, you know, we ran together, and, and we talked a little bit. I, I just wanna know, I just, I just have one question, and I think I know the answer, but I wanna ask it anyway. Is, is your passion, your dream to be an elected official, or is it to serve the people of Otomo?
Um, most definitely my passion is about, you know, serving the people of Otomo, um, you know, even outside of holding a political office, you know, I'm, I'm an educator, it's not necessarily a job that you do simply for money or for benefits, but because you love your community, you love the people that you work with, um, and that passion also, um, falls, you know, under working as a council member as well, being able to do something good for your community, um, to show up for them and, you know, provide solutions for your community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have any questions.
Did you have any questions for the council, Cyan?
Um, is, is this a projection that you, um, foresee coming, that, that I would fill Sandra's position on the council?
I think we're still discussing, so you're welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting if you'd like to, um, hear more discussion.
It is a public meeting.
Okay, yeah, unfortunately, at this specific moment, I cannot say on the phone, um, however, I, I'm, you know, if there are other questions that you might have, I'm certainly open to answering those for you. Um, if you needed me to come in at a, a separate time, then at this very moment, I would also be happy to do that as well.
So just so you're aware of the process, um, if the council decides to fill by appointment, uh, either yourself or any other means, um, we post a notice, the city posts a notice, uh, for fourteen days, so if anyone in the public could still file petitions request a special election, um, otherwise, the other, the other alternative for the council is tonight, they could decide to do a special election, and that would kick that into, uh, that process as well.
So if we, let's say, so does the appoint, like, uh, that, so once it's, uh, gosh, okay, so once it's posted, so like, if, let's say, we make a decision today, so tomorrow would start the fourteen days, or...
Does this should get, correct, fourteen business days, fourteen just, fourteen days? It's fourteen days, I don't know if that would kick off from today or tomorrow, but we get that clarification and post it.
Do holidays count, yeah, okay, fourteen days, okay, thank you, so it could be potentially the fourth or the fifth, or, yeah, okay, we don't know yet, okay.
It could be sixteen days.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Interesting, the threshold is four hundred and fifty votes?
Four hundred and fifty votes, yeah.
So Sandra, or Sandra, I apologize, Cyan, um, the, the threshold for the citizens, if they did try to petition for an election, a special election, would be, we believe, four hundred and fifty signatures.
Yeah, it's fifteen percent of the people that voted last time, which was twenty-nine hundred and ninety-five votes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like if petition is filed within fourteen days of the date of publication of the notice, or within fourteen days of the date of the appointment, the appointment would be temporary, and the city will be required to call a special election to fill the position, so if you made the appointment tonight, it'd be fourteen days from tonight, that's what it looks like.
Thank you.
Before it would become effective.
Yeah.
Right.
So if we appointed her, just so I'm clear, if we appointed her and we had to wait for the fourteen days to lapse, and nobody came forward with a petition, Cyan would be sworn in and would take office on the second meeting in January.
Sixteenth, it'd be the sixteenth of January.
Is that correct?
Um, we may have a work session in between there, so if...
We do have a work session on the night.
That's right, so whenever that would, fourteen days would run out, we'd look to have her sworn in, and, yeah, so she's available, whatever, next.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we do have one of them.
But definitely not the first, uh, council meeting.
I don't believe we have the time for you to think that, let's see, is it ten days, no, because...
Is that timeline manageable for you, if that's the direction that we went, Cyan?
Uh, yeah, that would absolutely be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are, you jumping off or staying on?
We'll let you hang on.
I'm gonna have to, uh, jump off, but I do look forward to hearing what the decision is.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be in touch either way. Thank you.
Okay.
Goodbye. You know, as I say, I have to think about everything about what Bill said, I think about...
And you guys talk a lot of...
I think about myself too, like, we say, and I know this is important, we talk about experience, experience, experience. You know, there's probably a time when not having experience could be a good thing too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, you, there's different ways to look at it, um, and she did run. I, I do worry, you know, it kinda was, I mean, you gotta go outside, I do worry about some of the areas that we, I gotta, I gotta hide that.
Well, I, my, my first preference, uh, I haven't been too shy about it, is we followed the election, and number three was the election.
Less than a hundred votes.
Yeah, so, I mean...
Well, with the Councilwoman McIntyre's point too, she did run.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As I say, there's another potential advantage, is we've been working fairly well with the school district, um, coming from being a school employee, there is that connection, and the council just approved that youth city council the other night. This would be a great step into that, uh, direction too, and having that, that buffer there, so there's some advantages potentially to that side of everything as well, with someone like Sandra.
To that point though, do, to that point, and it doesn't change my, my thinking, but do we run into a conflict of interest concerns when we're voting on anything related with, with, uh...
It would just be like when we vote with Go PIP.
I know, I'm just, I just, basically just throwing that out there.
Well, would she know, because does it, I don't think, 'cause does it benefit her directly?
Does she get a benefit out of that vote, that's, I guess, what her question is.
I was gonna say, she's one teacher in a pool of...
Yeah, it's not like Mark or...
And her position isn't going to be affected, like, if we approve to working with them on the tennis courts, that has no direct impact on her job, unless she was a tennis coach, and, you know, then, then maybe, but it's still gonna be...
Well, how about the flip side of that, that it may influence her vote, even though it's not directly with her, but pressure from being an employee, and you vote against something that you probably are not for, that the school, whatnot.
Man, I know that feeling.
You know what I'm saying, that, that becomes the conflict of interest.
And she has the opportunity or option to abstain from that if necessary. That's where we would just have to count on her professionalism. Yeah.
To do the right thing.
Well, well, I guess...
So does anybody want to make a recommendation for a certain approach?
I would make a motion that we, um, follow the, the November seventh or ninth, whatever the date was, election, and, um, appoint Cyan to a seat with the city council, so we'll fill out the remainder of Sandra Pope's term.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, Sheri will take the role.
Councilman Moreau?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion carried. So the next item is, uh, the public forum, I'd ask if anyone in the audience wants to speak on any item that's not on today's agenda.
Yes, I, I would encourage the council to consider back to streaming movie for the, uh, council meetings. I've had a number of citizens say they can't get the council meetings, and I explained that we're recording and putting them on YouTube, but they would like to watch them as they're happening, so just public information.
I've heard that as well.
I've heard that as well too.
Phil and I, Phil and I talked about that, and I think the feasibility of setting that up is being looked at, to be able to do that at Bridgeview.
We don't have the ability to put them on the GoTV, um, if anything, maybe streaming Facebook Live, but that's, might be about our limitations at this moment, while we're at Bridgeview Center. Well, Facebook does available to everybody, so live streaming, I think, would draw more people and make them feel like they're there, more a part of it. Flip side, if they're able to watch at the time the meetings are going on, love to see them at the meeting.
Amen. There are people who wanna watch you physically, or probably can't make it, so...
Travis, do you have something you wanna say?
I do, the, one big reason why streaming isn't gonna work as well is if people at home want to be able to see everything, I have multiple cameras set up, so the speakers there, I have the camera on the speaker, if they have a prent- presentation going, or if it's at the council, they're speaking, I have a camera on them, so I'm going back and forth to whoever the person of... I have a camera on them, so I'm going back and forth to whoever the person of action is. And we cannot do a stream with what we have with using multiple cameras.
Would you stream audio?
Well, one device will be able to stream audio.
Audio and mix.
So what, what would you have to, I guess I'm a little confused, what would you have to have in place then to be able to do it at Bridgeview like we did at City Hall?
I don't know the system at all.
You'd have to have a. You'd have to have a switch, essentially, that, so the Atumla School District has this, there's a switch that they're physically switching back and forth between cameras in real time.
And that's what Edward was doing when we were still at City Hall, which you would be doing if we were at City Hall.
I will be doing it.
So that'd be cost prohibitive to do?
Very expensive.
Well, and we never know what room we're gonna be in, so.
Okay.
Unless they can give you a dedicated, or whatever that all set up in.
I know there was some.
Equipment we could use.
I know there was some discussion about using the career campus, and I don't know what the details are, but that might be another good.
There's a cross to that though.
That's why I said I don't look for details.
Yeah, yeah, we reached out to them, and I can't remember what the costs were, I had a, I have a quote, but it was so much per hour, plus their tag person or whatever that they would charge for. And we have Bridgeview Center at no cost. No additional costs, I should say.
Maybe we could talk.
The audio thing?
Streaming the audio?
Streaming audio would be, you know, at least we're giving some form and.
I, I could look into it, it'd probably be just same as a, just like doing a Facebook Live only.
Yeah.
Be kind of a weird angle, maybe. So you, you'd be able to see it, just you wouldn't be able to see half the people talking.
No, I'm stuck into strictly audio.
I, I, I've never streamed anything on, on there, so I don't know if you could just choose to stream the audio or not.
Really, if you wanted to, if you wanted to do a stream, the best thing to do would be have a third camera set up in the room with as wide angle a lens as possible, that way it's capturing everything. That's, that's really the best way to do it. And at that point, um, you're probably gonna, still gonna have to make an investment in some equipment, so you can have mi- a microphone specifically to that device, um, which could be a, a few hundred dollars as well.
Didn't, um, Atumla Radio use to stream, like, forums?
But we're getting a little bit into something that's not on the agenda.
Well, it's a public forum.
No decisions can be made.
Maybe the conversation with the Atumla Radio.
Receive the information and then put it on a future agenda.
Sorry, okay.
Yeah, cause I've, I've heard those same comments too, that people really miss having the, the setup that we had at City Hall, so more, more work needs to be done on that.
I know we want our citizens to take it serious, and that'd be a step in the right direction, giving them the tools.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anybody else that has any other topics they would like to bring up that aren't on our agenda today? Hearing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn today's special city council meeting, so.
Second.
Okay, Sherry will take the role.
Councilwoman Barrow?
No.
Councilwoman Galloway? Yes. Councilwoman Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
Yes.
If he motions, he should not be saying no.
We, we are adjourned.